Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started here. It's April the 16th, 2019 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to first of all introduce our honorary City Council member, Sandy Salubre of the Granbury Middle School, Granbury ISD. Sandy is the daughter of John and Tessa Salubre. She is an eighth grade student at Granbury Middle School and the president of the Student Council at GMS. And Sandy has participated in the Robotics Club, the Innovation Club, and the Engineering Club. Now can you guess what she wants to do? She is also a current member of the Slackers, a reading and leadership group. Outside of school, Sandy takes pride in participating in martial arts. So welcome Sandy to our young students. We're going to go ahead and start off with our invocation led by Kevin Spencer, the campus pastor of Center Point Church of Granbury, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own Sandy Salubre. All rise please.
Let's pray. Lord, we take this time to lift you up and make room for you. In this time, I pray that we are led by you, the men and the women who lead this city, to have wisdom and understanding and guidance by you for the best direction for all the people of Granbury. And we thank you for everything you are, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the United States flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state of our God, one indivisible.
Well, folks, we've got a relatively short agenda, I think, tonight. But I'm glad to see so many people out there on this, I guess it'll be the week before Easter, so I hope everybody's got a nice Easter planned and got a lot of activities. Looks like it's going to be great weather for it, so looking forward to it. We're going to go ahead and start off with our, some presentations. We've got a couple or two or three presentations here, so I'm going to step down here to the podium to give these presentations at this time. Our first presentation is with Wesley Barefoot, which I don't know if everybody's read in the paper, but come on up here Wesley. Wesley was the gentleman that, for his Eagle Scout merit badge, I guess, he was challenged with a project. And his project was to build a life jacket rack for our city beach. And what inspired him to do that was some of the incidents that we had, and he wanted to make sure that we could do everything we could do in the community to keep the beach safe and those opportunities. As you know, to get this merit award, you have to take these projects on and you put the money in yourself and you build the project yourself. So we've had many, many people that have commented on this Wesley and are talking about, you know, what a great idea that was. So, you know, we commend you for coming up with that idea. You know, receiving this award is not real easy. You go through a lot of training, you go through a lot of years to receive this merit badge. And I heard a gentleman state one time at one of these that, you know, if you're going to go to school to be an engineer, there's a whole lot of people with an engineering degree out there that are applying for the job. There's a whole lot of folks there that's got the college education to get the job. There's a whole lot of people that's worked in the engineering field. So all these people are probably the same, but when they look at your application and they see that you are an Eagle Scout and you have achieved that, you have accomplished that, they know right off that was a commitment. So that's going to help out people that, like Wesley, that goes out there to get a job. He's going to be separated from some of those that have all the other qualifications that it needs to have to do something like that, but he's also going to have that also because it's not something that you earn in two or three years. So well done Wesley and thank you very much for what you've done for our city park. At this time, I would like to read the certificate to Wesley. This Wesley Barefoot is in recognition of your initiative to create an unmanned life jacket loner station at City Beach Park as part of an Eagle Scout service project with Boy Scout Troop 360 of Granbury. We want to thank you for your time, your leadership, your devoted to assembling the station now in place for the swimmers to borrow. Your contribution to the community for this significant accomplishments are greatly appreciated. Signed by myself on this day. Thank you Wesley. Get used to this, taking pictures, right? Wesley, thank you for this. Our next proclamation that we have is the proclamation recognizing a week of public reading of the Bible. I'd like to call upon Mr. Orkut. Fred, how many years you been doing this or been involved in this?
About five.
Five years. And it gets better every year, right?
It does.
Gets better every year. We get so many people that participate in it and set up there in the gazebo and read constantly the Bible and goes all the way through it. I always volunteer for the front part of it because I can pronounce all those words pretty much, you know. But it's good and it's always great to see so many people up there going through that. So at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation. The official proclamation, whereas among the greatest books produced throughout the history of mankind, the Bible has been prized above all others by generations of men and women around the world, by people of every age, every race, and every walk of life. And whereas the Bible has made a unique contribution in shaping the United States a distinctive and blessed nation and the people. And whereas it was the biblical view of man made in the image of our Creator that inspired the principles upon which the United States is founded. And whereas today, the Bible continues to give courage and direction to those who seek truth and righteousness. In recognizing its enduring value, we recall the words of the prophet Isaiah, who declared, "The grass withereth, the flower fadeth, but the world of our God shall stand forever." And whereas throughout our history, Americans have turned to prayer and reflection during times of strength and weakness and in moments of joy and despair, seeking comfort and giving thanks and asking for guidance and grace. So now therefore, be it resolved that I and Enyu, the mayor of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim April 26th to May the 2nd, 2019, as a week of public reading of the Bible. And May the 2nd, 2019, as, let me put that on your calendar everybody, May the 2nd, 2019, as the National Day of Prayer. That's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury on this 16th day of April, 2019. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Our next proclamation is a Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and I believe we have some representatives in the crowd? Yes, we do. You know, it's really important as we go into a holiday such as Easter and it's the beginning of spring where people are getting their motorcycles out of the garage, dusting them off, and preparing to ride them. And this will be probably one of the weekends where you'll see a lot more of that. And so it's very, very important that you identify that that's going to be the traffic you're going to see on the roads where you don't see it all winter long and to make sure that we take special caution to acknowledge that's going on. So I want to officially read the official proclamation. It reads as such. Whereas today, society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws, all the traffic laws and the safety rules. Now therefore, I and Enyu, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. So in Granbury, Texas, I urge all the citizens of the community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and give the operator the respect on the road that they deserve. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury on this 16th day of April, 2019. The only item we do have on the consent agenda is to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of April the 2nd, 2019 at our regular meeting. So council, you've had an opportunity to look those minutes over. Are there any changes or any amendments to it or would you like this item pulled? Here and none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said City Council meeting minutes. I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion? If no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And I'm going to let our honorary student to gavel this in. Those council meetings are approved. Thank you very much. At this time, it is my honor to present Sandy with a certificate. The certificate reads, "The distinction of honorary council member is presented to Sandy Salubre, Granbury Middle School Student Council President, on this 16th day of April, 2019 in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and representing the qualities of an excellent council member, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn and myself, Enyu, Mayor of Granbury." Congratulations. And with that also, we want to present her with the City of Granbury pin. She can wear around and tell everybody where she's from. And also on the back of the certificate, there is another certificate, and it's on the back of this one here Sandy, but this certificate also states on there, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary council member with the Granbury City Council." If you keep this certificate on the back of this one for your records and as you apply for colleges and scholarships in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements. Your service to Granbury ISD and as a student leader on your campus is appreciated. And we wish you the best of luck and a bright future. So thank you. Get a group photo now and we'll get the council to squeeze in here. Hold that down. You're good. You're up front. Get used to this, okay? Okay Sandy, thank you very much for joining us. And at this time, I'll have Mayor Protim, Tony Mobley escort you back to your family there.
That's me.
You know, they've got some ambitions that, you know, it takes a lot of their time up to do these kind of things. And as you read a bio like that, those are not easy courses to take on, but you can tell there's a challenge there that this young lady is wanting to do something up there that, you know, that interests her probably, you know. And so it's great to have those ambitions and thank her parents out there for allowing us to use her tonight. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move into the deliberation agenda. That first item being to discuss and consider reducing the pay for the city elected officials. Now this item was tabled at the May 2nd, 2019 meeting. So with that said, council, we would need to, first of all, to make a motion to untable this item. So I'll entertain a motion to take this item off the table. We have to, it was tabled, so now we have to have a motion to untable it.
Okay, then I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Mobley. All in favor of untabling this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is untabled. Correct if I'm wrong. So at this time now, we will move into this deliberation, Jim, that was untabled, and discuss and consider reducing the pay for the city elected officials. And since this item was put on the agenda by Councilman Tony Allen, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Tony Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize, I wasn't 100% ready the last meeting. I used the list of cities that Chris used to get his raise to call. And I used my own phone to call and I did the own calling. I told him I was the councilman with the city of Granbury, we had an agenda, what was going on. Even had a mayor to, or city manager, I think, called Chris when what was up. But it takes a long time to get all the figures. There's one or two cities that you had to have open record to find out what they paid or if they paid. But here's what we come up with. 11 years ago, when I got on the council, we had, my spirit had two real tough items that we put on the agenda. And one of them was to let our city manager go. It was a tough, tough decision to make. We had to find out more because I just got on and I was going by hearsay on a lot of it. And then we found out it was true. And finally, we dismissed him. It was a five oh vote to let him go. About three months later, myself and Mitch Tyra headed up the deal to cut the pay for the salary. Back then, the mayor was making $45,000 a year and now he's making 18. Now Mayor Protim, you'll like this, Mr. Mobley, was making $22,000 a year.
What?
Yeah, he got paid extra for something.
Should have done it before.
There was $12,000 a year and the council was 18 and we brought it down to 12. I wanted more and I did talk about it at the meeting and I didn't have the votes to get it done. And I never felt like I had it again until we got our council we got today. The last two elections or three elections, I went to a lot of the meet and greets and I heard each and every one of y'all up here say, "I give my salary to the charity." To charity. Well, let's give it back to the taxpayers. It's their money, let them spend it the way they want to. We go up on the water, we go up on the sewer, we go up on permit fees, we even go up on trash. So it's time for us to give back. And folks, if you don't understand this chart, see me after meeting and I'll go over it with you. We, and this is just an example, in our budget, we're considered in a 40 to 50 million dollar budget. Benbrook, they get paid $1,200 a year. We get paid 10 times more. Burleson gets paid $120 a year. I believe that's 100 times more. Bashrop, they pay $1,200 a year, 10 times again a year. And Fort Colleville's got a dollar, it's actually zero, they don't get paid, but it didn't, whenever we put zero in there, it came out with different numbers over there. But that's 12,000 times what we make. If you go down this list, Marble Falls, all of them, shows you that we're way out. West University Place, they get $300 a year. That's 40 times what we make. Then you go into a budget twice as much as ours, 75 to 100. And you've got Beulah, they play, they get $2,600 a year. Cleveland gets nothing and they're about five, six, seven times bigger than Granbury. Fredericksburg, they get 6,600 a year and that's about two times our salary. The Halton City is 20 times. Keller's 20 times. Cal is 10. Lepore is 17. Lender is nine. Sherman is nine. Stevieville is five. And Wedderford is 18. And looking this over and trying to figure out, okay, what's fair? Because it does take time to run, but it took every one of these cities time to run too. Their council works just like we do every day of the week. And when they got a problem, like one city manager said today, he said, "Our city council, I sometimes think is more full-time than some of our employees." And I don't know what he meant by that, but that's what he said. He said, "They're here all the time working and helping us." And, but looking at these deals, I'd like to recommend us to cut it in half and we're still the highest-paid council of all these cities, every one of them. And cut the mayor half, cut the city half, and give that money back to the taxpayers. And I'm open for suggestions, that's just mine.
And we did identify this as a discussion item. I guess that's what you wanted it on there as, Mr. Allen, right? Discussion item?
Well, I didn't put it that way, but it's how it is.
I'm sorry, yeah. Discuss and consider. Okay, so we've opened it up, council. Is there any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'll go first.
Okay.
So since yesterday was tax day, I'll make a reference that everybody can understand. When you do your taxes, what you have to pay is the check you have to send. You can always pay more. With council pay, yes, we get $1,000 a month. The city doesn't say you have to take it. You can always not accept the check or just tell them to keep it. So I guess my question is, and I thought Mr. Allen came on in 2010, but he says it's been 11 years, so I'm a little confused, but let's say it's 11 years. $132,000 later, we realize we're getting a check? And that's, to me, this is baffling.
It's not about me, it's about the taxpayers, Mr. Mobley.
Sorry, do I have the floor?
Go ahead, let me have the floor, Mr. Allen.
So, and in the last six months of his third term, his conscience grabs him and shakes him and says, "It's time for this request." I will say that personally, I make less than minimum wage working for city council because I'm at most of the events and I see a lot of you folks there. I don't submit mileage receipts for things that I do unless I'm going to Austin, unless I'm going to New Braunfels, unless I'm going to an out-of-town meeting. I don't submit meal receipts ever unless I'm on one of those longer trips. This chart would mean something if we requested what they spent on meals and mileage because I can assure you, the time I'm taking away from my family and from my business is costing me much more than $1,000 a month. And I'm telling you, look up minimum wage and I can assure you that many of us who are here are making less than minimum wage working for the citizens of this town. But I can also tell you, if I was only showing up to two council meetings a month, then I'd feel the need to give my check back to the city. And with that, I'll call the question.
I've got a comment on that, Mr. Mayor.
I think we've got to call the question. Do we have a motion to call a question?
No, I mean, there was no motion. Mayor.
Real quick, before you start, Mr. Allen, why did you select all the ones that were listed? There's obviously some that get paid more, right?
No, sir.
You couldn't find it? So you just went down to a list?
I called everyone on that list that Chris.
Where did you get the list?
From Chris, when he'd give it to us for his praise. At the same city he used.
These are comparables, okay.
There was two cities that said we had to have open requests to get them.
That answers my question.
I was going to say, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Ladies and gentlemen, hear me straight. Mr. Mobley, when he came down to run last time, he brought up a deal that's been going on for nine years for an impact fee at the island, but he brought it up to take care of, to take it off and not charge them anymore. Now that was political. This deal here, like I said before, I don't even know if I'm going to run or not, Mayor. And I know, I heard it good, Mr. Mobley, and I'd say it back to you.
Well, I don't want it to get political here, but go ahead, Mr. Allen.
But all I'm saying is that I don't think there's been anybody on councils since I've been here that says, "Here's your check back, keep it," like Mr. Mobley's saying to do. Nobody's going to do that, period. And let me tell you, I am not a financial genius, but I can read numbers. And folks, those numbers there do not lie. We're robbing the taxpayers. And I asked them to cut it in half and we'd still be the highest-priced council and mayor of all those cities, every one of them. Sir?
Is that prophetic, Mike?
No, we'd be as high as them if we cut it in half.
Number 66, whatever.
You know, Mr. Allen, I did come on board right after we did the reduction and that was, well, you read it off. Those were some pretty high figures there. And I think at the time, the council, including yourself, was, had actually laid out those numbers and you stated that you wanted less, but I mean, I think it was a council decision and voted on that this was the council, that this was the amount of money that they felt the council was acceptable to the community. And so with that, and later on, I don't know what year it was, but the mayor we had before actually felt like it needed to go back up and we did that at a workshop, I don't know if you recall that. And the council at that time said, "No, we're okay with what we've got right now." So there was an opportunity there and we said, "No, we're okay with what we have, we don't want it to go up anymore." We brought it back down. And so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, what has changed since some of those times that if it was acceptable then and not acceptable now?
When I hear people get on the campaign and say, "I give back all my money."
Well, let's don't talk about the campaign. Let's talk about what we are doing, what service we're giving to the community, what the community feels like is a fair price.
Tell me this, Mayor, what do all these people here do different than you do?
I don't know. I didn't talk to them, you did, but I'm sure that.
I didn't talk to the council.
I'm sure some of them may even get a, you know, they probably get something for their travel in the. for their travel in the town, I, I don't know.
We get travel, folks.
No, I'm talking about within the community.
I know, but we get travel expenses.
That's traveling out of town.
We go to Jewel Ball, we buy out of taxpayers' money, we spend nearly ten thousand dollars a year on, on balls and, and stuff that we go to that the taxpayers pay. We need to cut that out.
Well, that's state.
And nobody wants to do nothing but spend money.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
To address the, the recent comment about the balls that we go to, that's actually, those are charitable events, and as a city, I think that it behooves us to support those community events. They're fantastic events, every one of them gives back directly to our community. I would, I would be disheartened if we decided to eliminate those contributions as a city. And I don't think anybody in the audience would, would agree that we need to do that. Uh, I'd like to offer a little bit of a different perspective on the council pay. I know you're trying to compare us to other cities, and I appreciate that, but like Mr. Mobley said, there are some other elements in there that we need to consider that are not on this very deliberate piece of paper right here. There are, there are other expenses that we don't know about, um, but let me, let me offer you something else. We are, we have inherently been a retirement community. A lot of the folks that have served on this council have been retired or own their own businesses. We have a younger community coming in, and let me, I'm gonna preface this whole statement by this, uh, with this. There is no question that anybody that serves up here with a modicum of integrity understands that they are a public servant. We work for the people. Whatever we get paid, at the end of the day, we have to go home and understand that what we have done is the correct thing for the good of this community. End of story. If we don't, then we're not, we shouldn't be up here. Now, having said that, there are newer folks coming in, we've got a younger population coming in, um, if you want to, it's, it's very difficult to get people to even vote, let alone run for city council. At some point, none of us will be up here. There's going to be a younger generation that will be up here. However, things have changed over the years, it's not going to be the retirees anymore, it will be the younger folks that will have full-time jobs and full-time families that they're taking away from their families. There are some of us at this point in time and in the future, and probably in the past, I don't know, that have full-time jobs and have to, don't own their own businesses, cannot take time away at their own leisure without worrying about getting paid for it. There are folks that have full-time jobs that actually have to take vacation time to serve on this council, because there are some of us who actually go to those training sessions for a few days, go to the events, go to, um, the classes to better themselves and understand how to be a better council person at their own expense. Yes, we get paid to go, but we have to take time off in order to do that if we don't own our own business. We are, we are, um, we have to adhere to our own policies for the jobs that we hold. So, at some point, vacation time runs out, and if that happens, and there are fantastic, uh, seminars that we need to go to that we know are going to be good for our community as leadership, and we want to go, we have to take unpaid time away from our jobs. And just in general, being away from our jobs, that changes the dynamic of our job. So, it's not a lot, the council pay inherently, yes, compared to, to this sheet of paper, it seems like a lot, but inherently, as Mr. Mobley pointed out, it's basically minimum wage, and it's a, it's a part-time, almost to a full-time job sometimes, depending on how much you want to put into it as a council member. If you want to go look at property, if you want to research, if you want to read, if you want to call people and ask questions, that takes time. It takes time away from your job, it takes time away from your families, and I am completely willing to do that, that's why I ran, because this town deserves leadership that is willing to do the work. Now, if you have to take unpaid time, it's not a lot of money, but it helps. If you have to take an unpaid day to go to a seminar that will better this city, this minimal amount of pay helps alleviate some of that, and as you bring younger folks in, hopefully, there will be some new blood and some new ideas and some better options in the future that will lead this city into a better future. Those folks are going to want to have something to compensate for that time that they're taking away from their jobs and their family. Whether it stays exactly this way for, from here to eternity, or they decide in future councils to up it or reduce it, that has to be in a consideration. But we have to remember that not everybody up here owns their own business and can take that time and spend that time to better the community without making a bigger sacrifice.
Mayor, I have.
Councilman Allen.
I, I'll say ten years, just 'cause I may be wrong, my eleventh year.
Well, it's not important.
But I think it's eleven. But anyway, I have never, ever missed a TML meeting. Never, ever missed a TML meeting.
I'm not calling anybody on the table.
I know, but I'm just saying, I own my own business. It still costs me money. I mean, I don't, I get paid when I'm gone, but I could take and spend that time on, on my business instead of being gone for four days, Austin or Houston or whoever. So, yeah, we all do, but you know what? We knew that when we ran. I did. I knew exactly what I was getting into. You know, it's gonna be some hard work, gonna take some time, and, you know, away from, TML last week, last year was in Fort Worth. I never turned in a ticket in Fort Worth. And, you know, I agree with what you're saying about the balls that we go to and we, we get the hundred-dollar table, or thousand-dollar tables and all that. I agree, that's good for the community, but still, again, that's taxpayer money we're spending. So, I, I think we've gotta cut one or the other, and I'd rather just cut the salary of the, of the council and get in line with these other people. I mean, surely y'all can see that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mobley.
Just wanted to make one point, since Mr. Allen brought this up. Jewel Ball, and, and I will, I will also point to Ms. Pennell, who's in the audience. These folks support this community probably as much or more than anybody else in the county. The Jewel Ball alone has contributed more this last year than, and I'll quote Mr. Allen's ten thousand dollars a year on these events, but they've support, they've kicked more money back to the city this last year than we spend on three years' worth of these events. Now, Mr. Allen, I can run a calculator, and I can tell you, that's not a bad return on investment.
I hadn't looked at the numbers.
I have.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't know. I'm sure you're right.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
And I'm gonna have to, I mean, I'm the newest council member up here, I'm gonna have to kind of think about how I feel about.
How long you gonna say that?
I'm still within my first six months, okay?
Interesting.
A couple of thoughts I had is, first of all, to run for office costs forty-five-hundred dollars, and, and I had some donations that covered part of that, but a lot of that was out of pocket. Um, and I also, my preparation for tonight, when I saw this on the deal, was to see how much time I'm spending on the council, and I put it, I'm putting in between fifty and sixty hours a month in addition to council meetings with the things that we go to. Um, and that's not counting overnight trips. Um, you know, I, I was in, uh, we were in San Marcos, I was there with, with, uh, Mr. Mobley and Ms. Reiner a, a few weeks ago, and I was actually, I hadn't thought about this, because I own a business, and I have another doctor that works there when I'm not there, and yet it costs my practice money for me not to be there, but, you know, we're still seeing patients and selling glasses and whatever. And, and I was a little shocked when Ms. Reiner said that she has to use vacation time to go to things like that. I mean, you're, you're only given two or three weeks vacation a year or whatever, and, and you're, you know, the council, to me, it's more expensive for her than it is for me. My, my office actually kind of likes when I miss a day here and there, gives them time to catch up and they don't have to mess with me. But anyway, you know, so there, it's a lot of time, and, and, and there, you know, there is an investment in just being on office, I mean, being up here. I did this because I wanted to, to give back to the community, and I actually went to a child cancer care program Saturday night that the city bought a table for, and I donated almost a month's pay that night, because that's, I just wanted to do that. I, it was something that meant something to me, and, and, and I was happy to be able to do that. And to be able to do that and not, not face the wrath of my wife saying, "Can we afford that or not?" And, and I don't mean that in a negative way.
She's listening.
We, we, she probably is.
We'll tell her.
We, we give, we give back anyway, but, but I told her when I ran for office, I was told I had to have an account for, for donations, because you have to keep the money separate from your own. So instead of calling it a, an, an election account or something like that, I called it a city council account. And then after I was elected, the, the, the pay from the council goes directly into that account, and it's separate from my money, so I can use it for things like that. And I hear what you're saying about, you know, letting the taxpayer have it. Again, I might have to really think about how I feel about this, because I would say in the budget, this is a drop in the bucket, probably not worth the time we're spending up here talking about it. I probably shouldn't have said that. But, and again, I'm just saying what I, how I'm feeling. But I feel like the money I gave to that program Saturday night was beneficial to them, you know, and, and so, again, I'm gonna have to, I see your numbers here, I'm gonna have to think about how I feel about all this, but, you know, right now, I'm, that's, that's, that's my thought.
About eighty thousand, yeah.
And let, and let me talk about, when, as, as we're talking about, uh, you know, conferences, you know, and I, I spent a lot of years, thirty-two years, and went to a lot of conferences, and they, they had a name, they called them boondoggles sometimes, and I didn't consider that, because if you went to a conference and you really participated and you got something out of those conferences, it came back as priceless. And I see that with this, this council, there's conferences, and I'm gonna give an example, there's conferences we go to. We are now having e, a, a, our, our computers are outsourced now, and we ran into these folks at a conference, and we were in need of something, doing something with our, uh, with our IT department, because actually we lost a director and we were going down, and we needed to do something, and, uh, we sat there and we sit with this conference, these people spoke, and so we invited them to Granbury. We now use those folks, and this is a conference we went to, that maybe cost two-hundred-and-forty dollars for a room or three-hundred, whatever it was, and now we use these folks. And I can't put a price tag on it, because we're saving a lot, but we are, the taxpayers are, we're, we're giving back to the taxpayers there by going out, researching this, this firm that can do what we want them to do for Granbury, maybe not for Cleveland or Burleson or anybody, if it was that easy, everybody would just go ahead and piggyback off of each other. Same thing with these here, uh, these numbers that you see here, if it was, uh, if we were just like all these other places, then everybody probably would have the same numbers all the way across the board. That's not true.
They almost do.
Yeah, they don't. They don't, but.
They're damn close.
I'm talking about what they do day-to-day. I'm talking about their parks, I'm talking about their quality of life in the city. We have many, many people to come to Granbury, and they come to Granbury to live because of the quality of life, because of what we have right here in Granbury that they cannot get anywhere else. We've got people that want to bring their businesses to Granbury, because we have what they want, their corporation, that, that their employees, they want their employees to have this quality of life. It costs money.
It has nothing to do with the mayor, the council, or the mayor's pay.
It, it has something to do when we go to conferences and we get these kind of things.
Conference is not on agenda.
When we go to TML, it's all laid out there.
Conference is not on agenda, Mayor.
Well, you, you, you brought it up.
No, I didn't.
You said meetings, you said meetings and conferences and all these things. You talked about TML.
Yeah, I did, whenever you mentioned it.
TML.
I see nothing wrong with TML. I want to make a motion, let's go. I'm ready to roll.
Well.
Can I add one more thing?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Mr. Allen, still thinking.
When I was on the Charter Review Commission last spring, we discussed this, not at length, because no one on the Charter Review Commission had an issue with it at all, just to say that.
They were handled by some good people. Yeah.
So council, do you have any more discussion on this particular item? If no further discussion, and no motion?
Mayor, I will make a motion. I hope my fellow council people will follow on this and do what's right for our taxpayers. I'd like to see us go to half of what we're making for the mayor and the city council, and it will still make us the highest-priced-paid council of this list. It got Chris a good raise. That's my motion.
So I have a motion to, uh, reduce all salaries, council and mayor, in half. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we have that in a motion? Do we have a second? Here is, here and none.
It's election time.
Council, council. Here and none. That, that, that fails for lack of a second. Moving on to the second deliberation agenda. Number three is to discuss and consider inviting the Planning and Zoning Commission, discuss and consider inviting the Planning and Zoning Commission to a joint meeting with the city council to discuss creating efficiencies in the plating process. And I understand, I'm gonna call upon probably Chris also, but also, I want to, I want to kick this off, Bruce, or Councilman Mobley, he kind of had some concerns about this, so, Bruce, if you want to kick this off, and then maybe, I think Chris is prepared to talk about it also in some form here.
Well, something I've heard from actually people for years here, but a lot during the campaign last fall, is business, businesses and folks say, they don't like doing business with the city, because it's just difficult to get things done. And, and I've been to some of these meetings now where all cities say that, and, and I understand that, but I don't live in Cleveland or Burleson or Fort Worth or Steenfield, so if it's hard to do business there, I'm not real concerned with that. I am concerned about things being simple here. An example I want to use, because we've just done this in the last three months, Kenny Neper came in, I think originally right before Christmas, but they had a piece of property that had a house and a well on it, and they wanted to add two more wells and break it into three properties. And, and he went to, for the wells, P and Z, and then to council, and we voted to do the wells, they'd met the requirements, and then to do the, the new plat, P and Z and back to council for the preliminary plat, and then back to P and Z and back to council for the final plat, and there were no changes between the preliminary and the final plat. And it took a little over three months for them to take a piece of property that they could break into three pieces instead of one, to sell or develop or whatever, and, and I don't, I don't want to do anything that diminishes our authority or our responsibility, but like when it went from prelim to final plat and there were no changes, maybe P and Z could have been the authority at that point. And, and, you know, we meet twice a month, P and Z meets once a month, and, you know, and, and I'm not gonna say Mr. Neper was upset about anything, he didn't tell me that at all, and I've known him for years, so I just, I asked him, I was the one that approached him and said, "So tell me how this process has been." He goes, "You know, it just, it's taken months." And, and I can understand, you know, developers and builders and folks saying, "It's difficult to do business here if it takes so long to get something to happen, and if we could maybe make some things, you know, a little bit briefer." And when I saw this on the agenda, I really appreciated, because we talked about it a little bit at our, at our, whatever we did last month, Strategic.
Strategic.
Planning session, there you go.
February.
Fay was there, I appreciate you being there, Fay.
In, in February.
Anyway, that's, that's kind of where my, my take on that, and then Chris, you can say whatever you want to.
You bet. So we've talked about this for a while, and it did come up at our strategic plan, and it's an effort that we need to put forward, and we've been looking at it. And so we thought it would be good to get some collaboration, staff, that's we, thought it would be good to get some collaboration with the P and Z, so, um, we, we thought it'd be good to put it on the agenda for tonight, since it's such a short deliberation agenda. I would like to say a few things of how this could potentially work, and realizing that we haven't collaborated with the P and Z, uh, this may be all for naught, so, uh, but I, we've really got a great planning and zoning commission, we've got, uh, very knowledgeable people that, that are very balanced and, and want what's best for the community and have been appointed by this city, city council. There is a way to legitimately do it. In fact, the statute, um, that, that allows a city to adopt planning and zoning commissions automatically gives them the authority to approve plats unless the city council passes an ordinance contrary to that. So that's what we did. And so the state law requires for a preliminary plat to have one public hearing, and, and the P and Z, or the planning commission would, uh, be able to hear that and make it, make a determination according to state law. Our ordinance came along and said, "We want them to go through the planning commission and also through the city council before we can give them approval." So that automatically, automatically. So that automatically adds another layer of meetings and prep time, um, so, um, then the, the, and then, so that's for a preliminary plat, and then if there's, if there's variances involved, uh, then you have the same notice, notices go out, we try to do it concurrent, but if they change something in the middle of the stream, it could cause them another month and, and two more meetings for the variance request, and then the final plat would be, um, another month. And so, you know, by the time you do all your legal posting and everything, you're looking at about a four-month window of time in a picture-perfect process, if everything's right for development, and the engineer's done all their homework and got everything in order perfectly to submit, three to four months is the maximum you can do it. So, the other option would be to empower the Planning and Zoning Commission to do the plat review and the public hearing, and consider and, and adopt preliminary and final plats. Uh, you could set where they could review the variance request and, and determine those. However, there's a problem when you need to do zoning, because the state law requires the city council to do zoning changes, if you have to do a zoning change. So when somebody is doing like a, a planned development, um, much like an apartment complex that we recently went through, and it's being built over on, uh, Crawford Court or Hill Boulevard, um, you'll recall that was a long-drawn-out process that, that ultimately, uh, got approved at the end of the day with a lot of weeping and gnashing of teeth, and, uh, if you went by the state law, this council would've never had to deal with that issue, and, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission would've, would've handled it. So, um, but a planned development has to come back here, and so, 'cause there's a zoning component with that plat, and it's more difficult to do a planned development, and we don't encourage it, planned developments, because they are so cumbersome in administrative process, where they have to, they have to submit their full, complete set of engineering before we can put it on a, a plat, so, um, where it's a planned development, and then when they need to change something on a planned development, it still has to come back to the city council, just like this sign issue that we're dealing with in one of the plans that gave the subdivisions, they wanna put a sign up, well, it's a planned development, and in order to do that, their HOA has to adopt a change, uh, for their HOA to allow that sign, and then they have to bring it to us to go through the, the notice and everything to change the planned development. So, uh, if we can get some, some approval where if somebody's meeting the, the, the codes that we've adopted, that you've adopted as a council, and it's an adminis- it's a ministerial process at that point to get it approved, there's no sense in bringing it back to the next council meeting and having a public hearing and, and all that all over again, so, anyway.
Can I say something on that, Chris? Mayor?
Allen.
Thank you. You know how inspections, if you wanna call in and check, see if, uh, the roof was inspected or the framing or whatever, you can go online, you don't have to call in, I'm sorry. But I had, uh, was looking the other day with Gary, and I said, "We can go online and see where it is on there," and no, no developments online.
No.
How come?
We don't have the software.
We don't have what?
The software.
Software? But, but would that, what I'm saying is, for like, like Doc here, would that help him or Neeper, if we did have it online, they could kinda follow it through or not?
Well, I don't think that would speed up the process.
No?
No, it, it might communicate with them easier, but it's not gonna speed the process up, 'cause what they have to do is they have to submit their plans by a certain deadline, and then, then they post notice into the newspaper that it's gonna be there, it's like fifteen-day posting time, and then we have the meeting, and, and then the public hearing's the same night as the meeting, and then they could, there, in theory, they could approve the plat that night, but the way we do it, they gotta wait a whole nother cycle to go to a council meeting.
Couldn't we rewrite the deal there?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and let them do it.
That's what we're wanting, to have a joint meeting with them to consider all that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Captain Mobley.
Aren't we just discussing and considering-
Yeah.
-a meeting? Let's, let's talk about that and, and move forward with that, instead of talking about what we're gonna talk about at that meeting.
Yeah.
You want, council, you got any more discussion on this item? So you, you gotta entertain a motion.
Well, Chris, so what would be your suggestion as far as, we probably need to set a date for said meeting?
I would, I would, and Scott, have, have you heard if your Planning and Zoning Board would be available at either meeting in May?
We can wait on that, uh, as soon as it, uh, comes, uh, approached, we're exactly about to see if we can, if we're ready.
We'll, we'll either have it on one of the two meetings in May.
At the earliest, so at the most, at the earliest convenience.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to have a date on it, you could just, you, you just have the city ca, uh, the, the city manager to go forward with the plans and, and present it to the council.
So I would like, I would like to make a motion that we, uh-
Date.
Have a joint meeting at the next, uh, at the earliest convenience for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that motion, Mayor, but usually the first meeting a month, we're always packed, but a bunch of this, y'all think it'd be better to put it on a second?
I think it was at their earliest convenience, we don't really have a date yet. We're directing-
So we have a motion to, uh, to formulate a meeting, a workshop, a meeting with the P and Z and, and city staff, and to, uh, at the earliest date.
Yes, sir.
Possible date, earliest possible date. And we have a second on that, right, did you, second by Mr. Allen. We've had some discussion, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we look forward to Chris and his staff to put together something for us. Look forward to that, and I think it will help. My gosh, we're at the end of the sheet here. Yes, sirree. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in the open session, that all our members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, section 551071, consultation with the attorney, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. At this time, we will go into executive session. The council has reconvened into, uh, open session, there were no action taken in closed session. Council, do you have any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.